Members present at this meeting are Mary Ann Suttles, James McHarver, Richard Sprain, Mike King, Rob Johnson, and Robert Burford Chair. Staff members present at the meeting are myself, Kat Moody, Historic Preservation Specialist, George Worley, Planning Manager, Kami DeWitt, Community Planner, and Kaylee Nunez, Recording Secretary. This is an open public hearing is being videotaped and recorded by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is six. It will require four votes for a majority. All parties wishing to be heard will be expected to state their name and address for the record so we may know who is speaking and can record their names for the record. Please turn off any cell phones or electronic devices. Even though this is via Zoom, we still don't want to have your phone ring in the meeting. And mute yourself when you are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. With that, I will turn it over to Robert for the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Kat. This is Robert Burford, Chair. Our first item as, um, uh, excuse me. Our first item as, as usual, is reviewing the minutes from our previous meeting, February 12th. This is a special meeting for all of those to remember. And I assume people have had an opportunity to review the minutes. And if there are comments or changes or any, uh, uh, information for those minutes, I would ask the council members to please so state.
The commission members.
But I, I apologize, the commission members. Were there any comments on last month's February 12th minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, this is Rick Sprain. I make a motion to approve the minutes for February 21st, 2021.
Thank you. This is Robert. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mike King. I move that we second the nomination by Mr. Sprague.
Thank you. The motion has been made to approve the minutes from the February 12th meeting, and it has been seconded. I will have Ms. Nunez read the roll.
Um, Mary Ann Suttles?
Yes.
Richard Sprain?
Here.
Or yes?
Yeah, sorry.
Rob Johnson?
Yes.
James McHarver?
Yes, approved.
Mike King?
Yes.
Robert Burford?
Yes.
The motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Uh, again, this is Robert Burford. Uh, the next order of business, uh, because of, for this special meeting is HP 21 dash zero zero two. It involves 202 South Monazuma Street. Uh, the project is in our preservation district number one, the Courthouse Plaza, and it is a request, uh, approval for remodel of building for new restaurant by the name of Colt BB Barbecue and Spirits. And with that, I'll turn this back over to Ms. Moody. Thank you.
So I want to make sure everybody's seeing, uh, the street view of the corner of Monazuma and Goodwin Street, correct?
This is Mary Ann. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, so just wanted to make sure. Um, so this is just a view of, you know, basically current, uh, conditions uh, for the site of this request. Uh, this is, um, a building that we have reviewed several different, uh, iterations of, um, building facade wraps on in the past. It still retains its original, uh, architectural form where you can see it originally was developed as a gas station and, um, and it's pretty much retained that form through all the iterations of businesses that have been in here. We've had everything from the current business, the Sam Hill Sicar Company. Uh, there was a thrift store in here briefly, and Eco Three Oil Change were the most recent tenants for this site. Um, so that is the site we're looking at today. And let me pull up the plan view here. So the proposal here is, this is from your packet. And so this is the existing building shown here that you just saw from the street view. And the proposal is to expand this building out into the site. Um, and you could see from that initial view, quite a bit of the site is just a paved parking lot. So the proposal here is to do an expansion, basically wrapping that built, the existing building in, um, in a new facade. And so I'm going to break forward to this, and you can see the green area here is the existing building. And then I've outlined on this plan, the expansion area in red. And if we move forward to the next page of your plan set, you can see that primarily, um, the kitchen space is being developed in the existing building. And then an ADA accessible entrance and ADA accessible restroom is being proposed on the west side. And dining area and entry area is on the north and east side. And then the smoker for the barbecue is actually in the, um, the angled forty-five degree angled, um, protrusion here, uh, facing the corner. And to take a look at the facade, again, I've used that green color to identify the existing building that, um, you know, shown here with a stucco finish. So there's the two, um, there's two additional stucco walls along the south side being proposed that would match the existing building. And then this is looking from the north to the south. So this is the view from Goodwin Street. Uh, so these windows are being proposed in the dining area. This is the west side by the alley by Mile High Middle School. This is the ADA accessible ramp. And then you can see the angled forty-five degree section here. That's where the smokers are to be located. So to look at the side views, this would be the view from Monazuma Street. You can see the, the, um, addition area has a lower roof line. Uh, and it has just an angled, uh, low angle hip style roof that's being proposed. The, uh, facade is intended to be wrapped in a brick veneer. And I'll show you a couple of design details that, um, the applicant has provided to give you an idea of what that might look like. So this is a, uh, brick facade, um, that's going to be, is proposed to be painted black. And I'll show you those photos in just a moment. And then to look at the, uh, the west side of the building here, we have an ADA accessible ramp. And then the low angled addition that has brick veneer, uh, on that side as well. And this is the view from, that you would never see from the south because they're building in the way. Um, so this is the existing current structure. And you can see these new CMU firewalls that are part of a required, um, uh, code element in order to create separation between this business and the building to the south. And I've got one final detail here from the plan set. Just giving you an idea of this is, you know, the, the, an existing, um, stucco, uh, base of a building. And then the, uh, the roof here, uh, low angled, um, roof that would serve as, um, the, for the addition. And to go to both the photos, which have been provided by the applicant to give you an idea of the aesthetic that they're intending for the, um, for the exterior and interior details. Um, this is kind of the feel that they're looking for, a traditional western, but, um, black facade. And we have another example here of the, the black painted brick with, um, gold, uh, trim details. And that is, the applicant has indicated they're interested in that. This is an image from, um, you know, of, uh, potential bar configuration and trim details on the exterior, uh, that are design inspiration for the, um, the look and feel of this business. And then gooseneck style downlight fixtures. I believe this picture is rotated ninety degrees. Um, so these are a gooseneck style, uh, downlight fixture, um, shown again with a, um, design, uh, design, uh, detail for door and window trim potential for this, uh, for this business. So, uh, the, those are the photos and the plan set. And with that, I will turn it over to the commission for questions. And also, let me go ahead and open this up first. Um, Carson, uh, would you like to, to add to what I just went through?
Nothing in particular. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to ask them for it. Uh, the, the style of the building, we're looking just more of, um, well Brenda would be the more, um, proper person to describe the style of the indication of what we want to do there.
Right. It's, I mean, I think it's, I think it's obvious right there that I just want to do something traditional that fits into the downtown courthouse square. I just want to promote and, um, continue what you, what your committee's already started and hoping that that blends in. But, um, I am open to changes, that kind of thing. But that, I just thought that would be a really nice, um, elegant. I mean, Colt is a casual walk-up grill, but I wanted it to look classy. Um, I've, I noticed that after doing a lot of research and walking around and, you know, just going there continually that the western theme is very prominent, but it's more of a saloon type of atmosphere in most places. And I thought that we could just take it up a notch with something a little bit more, um, I don't know, classy, a little more, just different actually, uh, but still comfortable and still promoting the style that you're looking for down there. That's why, how I came up with the designs.
Thank, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. This is Rick Sprain. Kat, can you put the photograph up or the drawing up of the, the exterior of the building?
The exterior, the, the elevation?
That, because that does not show any of the designs that they were showing, that they want to include on it. To me, that looks like a brick building that looks extremely modern rather than an historical type structure that you're going to be adding the, the accents like you showed in the additional photographs.
Right, um.
Well, that's, that's just our structural detail right there. That doesn't include any of the trim or any of the elegant stuff that we'd be putting on, the wrapping the windows or to making it really stand out from, from that modern thing. We really personally don't really fly with the whole modern style of building. We really like that older style of the western saloon, real fancy classy western. Uh, modern is nowhere, nothing to do. We don't want modern in this, in this building.
Yeah, because that looks modern to me. Is, is that taking pretty much the whole footprint of the parking lot? So there won't be any parking lot existing?
The parking, the parking lot is still going to remain. Um, we're still going to have, uh, slight areas in there and, and, uh, uh, room or whatnot. But there's going to be covered in, transitioned into open patio seating and things like that. Um, luckily, uh, Prescott has a very nice parking structure with a lot of space and whatnot. So we don't, there's plenty of room for that downtown and, and things like that.
So you can see, Rick, here, I've got the site plan up. These are the existing planters that are there currently. And so, um, they've got, it looks like, uh, six, uh, parking spots here. Um, and this is still, um, open parking area. I mean, it's not designated for parking, but it is, um, that's currently a parking lot. Everything outside the red line here. And because this is part of downtown, um, business district, they're not required to provide, uh, any onsite parking.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. This is Mary Ann Suttles. Uh, firstly, to the carsons, uh, you have purchased this property. You're not a renter. Is that correct?
No, we are leasing the building.
So you're just leasing the building and doing the remodels on your?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
That's one. Secondly, the, the pictures and the plan and all that looks great. But do we, as a commission, have any type of follow-up? As when you begin that exterior and interior, uh, do we have, what's the word I want to use? Are we going to be able to, to state, yes, you, you did what you said you were going to do. It didn't change because dollars, this type of thing. What's?
Yeah, we, we can more than, if you guys would like to see it, we can have a meeting right before or before we, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so the, um, the architect provided these plans as a basic, uh, format for what we, what he thought that we wanted. But we have the luxury of designing in the field. So after I got these plans, I decided that this wasn't quite what I had in mind. So I redesigned the exterior with the designs that are attached. So we're going to make those changes in the field. And they're going to work with, I'm going to use the, um, basic structure and designs that were submitted to me and that I paid for. But I'm going to make it look like these images. And luckily, I have very talented contractors that are going to be able to do that for me. So, um, as I said before, I'm open to changes. Absolutely. We want it to fit into the courthouse square. But I just want you to know that that is the goal. I don't want it to look like, I don't want it to look like the plans that were submitted. They, they're too basic. They're too modern looking. It almost looks a little bit more like a medical building or something of that sort. Um, and I've, I've done interior and exterior design for, well, since I was twenty-one. So a really, really long time. And I know how to take plans and make them look, um, the way I want them to look with the contractors in the field. So I have a lot of experience in that. And I assure you that they're going to look as close to these images as possible. I want the building to look good too. So make it proud for not only my team, but for Prescott as well.
All right. Kat, question for you. Since they're in the preservation districts, are they doing everything that is required for that district?
So the requirement for that district, um, is that they have, uh, the work approved with, by this commission before the issuance of a building permit. And so they're completing that stuff right here. Um, as far as are they adhering to the guidelines? Um, as indicated in the staff report, uh, a lot of the design details that they're proposing to use, um, brick is encouraged. And this is not, um, old brick. Normally, we wouldn't want to see brick that was already existing painted. But this is new brick veneer and, um, painting in new brick would not be considered something that would be bad, uh, for the district. There are other similarly painted brick, um, on this block. Uh, certainly the, the lighting details, the trim details, the use of brick as a facade. It, those are all, um, completely in keeping with the district guidelines.
Okay, because the reason I ask, they are right downtown, right there on Whiskey Row, right around the courthouse. And, and the look we're seeing, because we still have the old building and only drawings. I just want to make sure we have that, that connection with the carsons as to what they're doing and making sure they adhere to what that downtown is. That's.
Of course.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, and you can, I mean, I didn't mention this at the beginning, but the building, as it currently sits, is not listed in the national register. It's, you know, too young when it, it doesn't represent the period of significance for this district. Um, but you can see, you know, adjacent buildings are all brick. Um, the, the building that's now housing, um, the haunted kitchen, um, down, just down the way is actually a black painted brick. Uh, so I think that generally the, it, it would, uh, fit into the context for this district.
Okay.
So this is, uh, Jim McHarver. So I might, uh, just want to be clear. It's the, the brick veneer will be painted black. Uh, that's, that's how you have it planned?
Oh, I have it planned right now, yes.
And Kat, there's no, uh, no restrictions as far as, uh, the, the color of the paint or anything for the downtown area?
Well, as, I mean, as we've had a discussion recently about paint, uh, in this district, it's a fairly broad, um, guideline. It says compatible with other colors within the district. And you can see, just looking down the view I have up here, we have a mustard yellow, we have a black. We have, you know, a, a brick red, and then we have traditional brick that's untainted. Um, and that's just this one particular block. Um, the color scheme for the district is pretty diverse. Uh, I think if, as long as it's not something super bright, I don't think that there is going to be an issue with that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Mike King. And thank you, the, uh, the proponent there for bringing this to our attention. Uh, this picture that's there right now, how congruent does Sam Hill's building look to Whiskey Row? Not too, not too congruent to deal with what, uh, Mary Ann was talking about. Uh, I think your proposal is a good one. It's going to change the character of that very busy corner. Uh, I walk it all the time on my tours and see it often, make my turn there instead of going down to the malfunction junction. So your, your, uh, proposal is a good one. Secondly, though, I, I am concerned about, we in the past have spent a lot of time on some very minor signing things and colors. Uh, and the, and the building, uh, footprint that you've put in there is still, um, it's a proposal. So in the past, we've been very selective and, and, uh, spent extra time looking at these kinds of things. And it would really enhance us, uh, ma'am, if you, if you did have some better drawings that would depict what would be seen from Goodwin and Monazuma. Uh, you, you've obviously described it quite well. It's a medical building on Whiskey Row. So, uh, I, I'm confused as to what the next step would be for this commission. Do we just say, yeah, go ahead and, and make adjustments in the field? We have not done that in the past. So I need some advice from Kat and others.
Well, I can tell you right now that there was a original hand drawing of my designs, um, given to the architect. Unfortunately, it was lost, so I can have that redone. It took several hours. But if that would help, I can, uh, redraw a portion of the view that you want to see um, and have that, um, created so that you can, you'll get assurance that the vision that I have for, in the, um, attached, uh, inspiration photos will indeed be the same as that's going on the building. It's not going to look exactly the same, obviously, because those are just vision photos. But we can hand draw it so you can see the, the multi-level mold. Even that molding right there that you're looking at isn't thick enough. I really wanted, you know, triple moldings around the windows. I wanted to look old. I wanted to look aged, like it's been there forever, um, at least as long as the other buildings around it. So it fits in. Um, the last thing I want to end out like in my, at drawing to blend in with what you have down there in the courthouse square, but even in an elevated manner, if that makes sense. So it's, it's going to have deep, as deep windows as I can get. It's going to have moldings around the glass. Um, we'll have, you can see the moldings above those letters. Um, the sign will look like that. Uh, the, the construction team has a lot of experience in woodworking. So I tend to do elaborate moldings around signs, windows, doors, that type of thing. I'm lucky that, uh, that ability helps promote the design, a traditional design more. I am more, um, favorable to a traditional design. I always have been. I love that old look because it takes contractors a lot longer to do that. It's a specialty. You don't, you know, modern style, a lot of times doesn't take as much intricacy and artistic ability. So I love to put in those types of details whenever possible. This building's, because it is so prominent on the corner, my desire is to have it really look like a jewel in the crown of courthouse square. I want it to look so that when people go down courthouse square, it fits right in and elevates it. So people think, they come around the corner and go, wow, okay. If the design is as good as I want it to be, people are going to want to go there just to see what's inside. And that's the goal. You know, as a, there's a lot of great restaurants downtown and they're, they're all good. And I want to make sure that I do get some traffic at some point. So I want to make it look that it's, uh, appealing and people will want to go inside. So I can definitely, circling back, I can definitely have that drawing done again so that you can see the elements applied to the existing drawing.
We're also going to have to reconvene, uh, for our signage because we don't have our proper designs for our signs as, uh, Kat and I had, um, emailed about. Uh, so we can also propose, uh, bringing back a visual sign just to confirm that everything we're saying is going to go on that as well. Um, we're just a little bit, uh, just trying to move forward, I guess, a little bit. I'm sorry, I'm the contractor, so I'm, I'm on the building side of it. But, um, we're just on our third round of submittal. Our plans are done. So we just wanted to get this going as you guys have already sacrificed your time to make this emergency meeting. Thank you so much, but, uh, we just wanted to keep, keep everything rolling as well, so.
Uh, this is Mike Murco, and I'm sorry, I'm a little, uh, tuned in a little late. Uh, I have a question. Is there going to be alcohol, um, served in this place?
Yes.
Uh, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, aren't you right near a school? And isn't there some sort of laws governing how far away from a school you can be?
Yes, and we're within those laws.
We are.
According to the Arizona Department of Liquor. Yes, sir.
All right, that was my question.
Uh, this is Jim McCarver.
George, did you want to address that?
The question of the liquor licensing?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, most, most of our downtown has been designated as, um, an area that, under a state law, would allow, um, liquor licensing without that three hundred foot distance separation. It applies elsewhere in town. It's called an entertainment district. So it's perfectly legal to have, um, the liquor licenses in closer proximity to schools. There are some additional protections that are required by the state statutes for it. So it's perfectly legal to have um the liquor licenses in closer proximity to schools. There are some additional protections that are required by the state statutes for it.
Thank you.
So this is uh Jim McCarver again. Uh, on the plan, is the top of the current building higher than the extension?
Excuse me, say that one more time?
The 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 current building, it looks to, i- is it, is it higher than the than the uh the extension that you're putting in? It looks, I'm not sure about that green area. Is that
So the green, the green shown here is the existing building. So along the south wall, which is adjacent to the brick building next door, they have a section, they have two extensions of a stuccoed CMU wall. But then, all the rest of the addition, as you can see here, is actually lower. So to go back to the plan view, there's a stucco wall here that's higher, and a stucco wall here that's higher. But all of the area outlined in red is lower than the existing building in green.
We're gonna keep the remaining of the, excuse me, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Uh, we're gonna keep that so we can use it as a parapet to hide all of the industrial items up on top, like the AC units, HVAC, and all that stuff, so it's uh invisible from the naked eye from the street.
So the the very top uh that's that you can see on that side shot, uh, is that, what what's the, is that be covered with brick too, or what's the covering on that? The part that you list, that showed as
The parapet will be a a stucco covered um up on the, yeah, those, the top left and right will be a stucco covered. Um, and and what the color, I believe, is going to be
Hopefully, it'll be black.
It'll be black.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, and and this, and the side, the part that's green on that uh uh side view that's being shown, that'll be black also?
Yes, that's stucco as well.
But it won't have, it'll be stucco. We'll have brick veneer up there.
No, that, yes, the the green section on top and the two parapets on either side will remain stucco.
Okay.
The stucco's for the fire, uh, our fire rating that we have to have for the building department there.
Okay.
And currently, this building, um, it was stucco, uh, and for the Eco Three oil change conversion, when they moved into the building, they wrapped the the building in uh like a vinyl or um or a pre-finished aluminum panel system. So there is stucco underneath this panel system.
Yes, this is Robert Burford, Chair. I have two or three items. Uh, I'll uh, I'll take them in sequence here to continue this uh um discussion about what the exterior is going to be, what um uh, and I would agree with Mike, uh, we have not um I would not be able to approve this to send, send forward uh without seeing what is actually proposed. Uh, I don't know if the building department will approve that or not, but they're separate from us. And uh, I I think the detailing you're showing in concept photos is excellent. I thi- I think that would be uh, that that would be approvable. But um, I for one need to see that as the submittal city approves, and that's what you're gonna do. If I make changes in the field, I'm all for that, but I think this is too far away from being a conceptual diagram and not a uh construction document that I for one could 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 approve these these plans. Onto my next concern is um, I I would request, just for refreshing my memory here, if if Kath or or the owners would uh walk me through the exterior once again and uh note how this parking is going to work, note whether future canopies are proposed for uh, which I think would come back to the commission and come back through building department for the exterior areas. I would also like to know where currently, uh, I travel down that uh, just for one, travel down that alley, and the current dumpster locations requires you to drive up onto the sidewalk there by the school. Now, it is a school once again, and not um addressing the liquor license. That's that's fine. This is an entertainment district, I would assume no less, but uh, there is, there is a pedestrian way back there, and the current dumpster locations are sitting in the alley. Uh, I think it's because that's the only way they can be accessed by the city utility uh pickup trucks. And so I would like to have a little bit better understanding of how those are going to work and whether the city is just going to turn them at their discretion so that they can access them easily, even if they are tucked away or something. Um, that's a, that's a concern of mine. And otherwise, I'm, uh, don't get me wrong, I'm happy to see this property being developed, and it it appears your ideas are going a good direction, but those, those are my comments, and then I'll turn it over to the other commissioner.
So I would just like to um bring up the point that the dumpster location and access are completely outside of what this commission is going to be considering. Um, that's in that has the location is reviewed and approved by somebody from the solid waste division. And so the arrangement, you know, that's shown here on the plan, has had review by solid waste personnel, and they're okay with where the dumpsters are shown being located. And so the commission really, uh, unless there is like a screening requirement, and there's a visual element for screening, then we would review that component, but the actual dumpster location um is really something that is dictated by the um, you know, access to the dumpster by the trucks that are required to empty it.
And Kath, again, this is Robert Burford, and uh, could you point out where that dumpster location is, and if it doesn't end up there? Uh, I mean, this would be a backdoor denial of of the location for the dumpsters, turn this project down in our commission. I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I I would like to place some sort of review or further study on that. Uh, just to say that the city's waste department is fine with it. Um, I I I think begs the question whether it's uh appropriate or not.
So the dumpster location is right here uh on the plan. And so it's outside the right of way. It's required to be located on their property. Um, you know, where the truck actually ends up setting it back down is something that you know, dictated probably by the truck and the driver.
May I inter- interject very shortly? Um, we have received a authorization and approval from the city and the building department with the right of ways, and with our waste management company who manages our dumpster disposal as well before, before meeting. That was taken care of on our our first round of submittals for the, our building department. We knocked all those Ts and dots out, so that way we have all of our medians, right of ways, and everything cleared up.
So Robert Burford, once again, uh, so I'm I'm taking it this is private disposal, not city disposal?
Yes, we'll be using um Taylor, or not Taylor, um.
Patriot.
I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank for the name of our company. I can't pull it right off the top of my head, but we use them for our other, both of our other locations as well. That is a
And that's, that's up to them, whether they contract with the city or with a private provider.
Well, again, Robert Burford, I I don't want to make this a pet peeve, but uh, figure that you're you know, watch a truck go down there and pick up at that angle. I don't think that's possible. I mean, it's n- nice on paper that it's within. And I don't know what we can do about it. You you have trash, we all generate trash. We need to get it out of there, and we need an alley that's accessible to cars, uh, uh, trucks, service vehicles, um, you know, service truck stop in the middle of a Cortez Street designated parking uh stripes uh to take eat up a couple of lanes. I mean, I I I understand the logistics of all of this. I I I just would like someone to pay a little more attention to how that works, then maybe we need the uh the, maybe we need the trash company, you know, throwing a letter here.
So this is definitely outside the, what this commission is reviewing regarding this this uh request. So the request is dealing specifically with the the building addition and the facade treatment for that building addition. So that's, that's what you're reviewing. Um, you're, we're not reviewing the dumpster location, and we're not reviewing um, you know, any of the those more mechanical related items for this site.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman, I have a question. Kath, explain to me, get right down to the one oh one. We are looking at this design, but it isn't quite what the commission expected design to be. It's possibly, this is what we have, and we've had the applicant said they would get back with something that was a little bit truer, which is what I would like to see. I, I don't know how I can vote on something that we don't really have an idea of what it's going to be. We see pictures, but we don't know what it's going to be. I appreciate the emergency meeting, and I certainly want to help. But what is this commission supposed to do? Do we wait? Do we see the drawings? Do we vote on this? Do we come back? What, tell me what our path is.
Well, there's a couple of options. So one option would be to, um, well, there's a, there's, there are a couple of options. So what, the the one option would be to table the item until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is April ninth, I believe. Uh, April ninth. So during that time, the applicant could bring back drawings, um, and then it could be, you know, approved. Uh, the the facade treatment could be approved at that point, and the item would be, you know, complete. Other than signage, which may come back in the future. Or they could bring signage and the facade rendering to the commission on the April ninth meeting for a, an approval for the entire package. Another option would be um, the applicant is ready to pull a building permit. Um, another option would be to approve the um, the construction or the concept of the appro- you know, of the addition uh, only, and not approve, approve the facade treatment, and then they'd have, be required to come back for a separate facade approval. Um, and that would get them out the door with a building permit, so they can at least start working on the initial steps, um, lining up contractors and scheduling um, work on the site. Uh, so that would be another, it would be a partial approval. Uh, that would be another route to go.
If we were able to do a partial approval, that would be perfectly ideal, because any of this veneer or whatnot, that can all change later down in the project, if you guys see fit, and that you want it to change or whatnot. Um, just as of right now, unfortunately, uh, no, no one's being blamed at all. Um, but this is on our, we're on our third round of submittals. We just should have been nipped on our our first submittal when we originally signed in or submitted to the building department. So we're just, we're way behind here on this project, and we're eating the cost here every single month with this project not starting. So is, if we were able just to start our project, get our building permit issued, because that's all we're waiting on now, is just this visual detail. We can have that for you ASAP, where we can have it presented to you here at the next meeting on the ninth, or whatnot, however you guys would like to see fit. Um, that way we can break ground. I can get our contractors lined out, and we can get everything rolling, and we're not just held up waiting for just a a single picture. If possible.
Mister Chairman, it's Mary Ann again, and I can certainly vote for a partial approval of this and allow these applicants to pull that building permit uh, and get them started, because we're still in a process, and it's going to be a while. And try to get as much as possible back to us on the ninth. And uh, let's see what it looks like from there. What's the rest of the commission say?
Well, Mary Ann, I think that's probably something Bob's got to bring, bring forward as the chairman. But I support uh what's been described, and thank you for daylighting the options, Kath. And I support Mary Ann, but I think the the chairman needs to uh call for the question here.
Yeah, this is Jim McCarver. I think that, at least personally, I don't have any issues with the basic uh footprint, the plans. It's primarily the exterior of the building that we're getting hung up on, and so I would agree uh, with some type of motion that would uh allow partial approval, so they can get going.
Hi Kath, this is Rob. I'm I'm in agreement with that as well.
Okay.
And Mike Murco, and I'm in agreement with that also.
Uh, this is Robert Burford, Chair. Uh, two things I would, before we m- move to that, I I feel that would require a motion and second. So before we go to that uh next step, um, I would once again ask Kath to describe the exterior one more time for me, please, or for all of us, and uh also uh delineate what it is we're waiting for, we would be waiting for, if we want to give this in a two-step agreement process.
Okay, so you want me to describe the exterior?
Please.
Okay, so this is the existing in green here. This is the existing um, uh, you know, flat roof uh uh, parapet wall building. The uh proposal is to add a hip-style roof addition here uh, in the outlined red area, and then this is a uh smoker, the smoker's house in this area. And this uh building, this would be um with a shingled roof with a brick veneer, uh, a painted brick veneer, and then there's an addition of two stucco walls here. In the rear, in the west side of the property, is an ADA accessible ramp. There are, uh, it looks like six parking spots here, well, five, and a handicap access um, route here in the front of the building. The existing planters are being, uh, they're left to remain, other than the section that it protrudes into the parking area. And then the rest of this site is a paved um site up to the back of sidewalk. So the the exterior components are the the shingled roof, and then the brick veneer with windows in a style yet to be presented. The motion would look something like um approving the uh, approving the uh issuance of the permit for the remodel and addition. And then pending approval, pending future approval of the facade uh treatment.
Okay, thank you again. This is Robert. Uh, ex- explain how you get in and out of the parking spaces?
So the alley would provide access to So the alley would provide access to these three spaces. So I think you'd be pulling in the alley here and backing out the alley to get out. You know, backing into the alley to get out. And then these two spaces would be accessed from what is currently the parking lot.
Okay.
And they, as is stated earlier, they're actually not required to provide onsite parking, but they are providing onsite parking and probably mostly, you know, to provide ADA accessibility to the building.
During our preliminary code review, a lady had asked us very, very sincerely, she said, you know, we've been fighting for those ADA spots forever to get into those areas. So please keep those and, you know, no problem, no problem at all. And that way it's, it's a much easier because there is no close ADA for any of those uh, handicap folks or whatnot that are coming into the area. So wanted something a little closer, make it easier for them.
Makes sense.
Thank you, uh, Robert Burford again. Uh, I would, I would, I either ask a commission member or Cat to uh, uh, develop a motion here that would be compatible with what we're wanting to do.
So I can't develop a motion. I can, you know, I sort of outlined what would be included in it. But uh, one is the commissioners will have to take that on.
All right, let's see if I can start with this. I would like to make the motion that we do a partial approval to the applicant, and I don't have the number that we've got. You'll have to fill it in. I don't see it on the screen.
It's H P twenty-one dash zero zero two.
Okay, so that's in the motion. Uh, two, and let's see if I could try to allow the applicant to apply for their building permit. We will continue to look at this project with the other factors coming in on our next board meeting in April the ninth. Am I close?
I think it's too vague. So I, I'll, I'll just outline it one more time for, um, I, you know, I think the intent is to do a partial approval for uh, issuance of the building permit to proceed with the remodel and addition to the building. Pending approval of exterior facade details at a future date.
All right, exactly what I said. We just cleaned it up a little bit. That's my motion.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, this is George Worley. I would suggest rather than a future date, be specific and say the, the ninth.
I did say the ninth.
Very good.
I, so I feel like we need to restate the motion so people know exactly what they're voting on.
Kaylee, do you have that down? This is Robert again.
Y- yes, I have it down. I have it typed out, so, um, I think it's a matter of getting it spoken on the record by commission members, but I, I do have it here on the minutes. Yes.
Kaylee, can you read it back to them if you have it on the record?
Yes, so the motion is for a partial approval of H P twenty-one dash zero zero two to allow the issuance of a building permit for the remodel in addition with exterior facade details to be determined at the April ninth preservation commission meeting. Does that sound good?
Yes, that sounds accurate.
Does everybody have that? Do we have a second? This is Robert.
This is Mike King. I second that motion and that's a good ventriloquist uh, that you did for me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I will take the roll call now. Um, Mary Ann Suddles?
Yes.
Richard Spray?
Yes.
Rob Johnson?
Yes.
Michael Murco?
Yes.
James McHarver?
Yes.
Mike King?
Yes.
Robert Burford?
No.
Okay, the motion passes six one.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. We'll be reviewing this again.
So Carson will expect to get um, the, the design renderings from you. And if you're ready to bring your signage forward at that time, you can combine those. Uh, yeah, and so that'll get you kind of everything you might need from the commission and the, at the April ninth meeting, so.
That's perfect. We'll have, go ahead.
Cat, I have a question. Are we going to be able to meet down at City Hall for all this? Or is it going to be Zoom again?
Um, I think that's yet to be determined, but we probably have the potential for uh, in-person meeting on April ninth.
I would, I would like to suggest that if it's any way possible because I think it's a, it, it's a much easier discussion when we're all together, but I'm just throwing that out.
Okay, I will, I will see what I can do. Um, but I believe that is a potential now that City Hall has been reopened.
Th- this is Jim McCarver. I am not gonna be in town that weekend, so if you have it in person, can you also Zoom the meeting?
Yes, we can do that.
Uh, Cat, this is Mike King. I'm also on another board. We're meeting in person on Friday at eight o'clock. So uh, uh, I think there is a loosening up, so to speak, uh, of being in-person meetings. I would support Mary Ann and uh, the, the others who may be of that ilk.
Okay. We'll try to make that happen.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Robert Burford. Uh, next time the business is updated, current events or any other items that the commissioners want to address? Or the public?
Um, I, I have one item and that is that the uh, railroad trestle plaque uh, has been installed on the railroad trestle bridge. And we are looking to do a potential event at the bridge on April second at two PM. So you can look for an email to go out regarding that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items?
I have a question. This is Rick Spray. Cat, do you know if the state is gonna be holding a convention this year? Since they've canceled last year?
Um, I think if they are going to hold it, it'll probably be very similar to last year where it's a virtual event. I have not heard there, that they are doing an in-person event at this point. But I will keep you informed and I can give you a follow-up on that on April ninth.
Okay, are we good? I will, hearing no other comments adjourn this uh, special meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all.